Okay.
I'm going to meet up.
So eight o'clock. And we take out.
Margaritas. Bring us back into it. I have a motion and a second already on the floor. Jennifer, will you please read me, read off the motion that we have?
Mr. Day moved to give a half percent raise for all employees, two hundred thousand for the CTE program and to fund the math program.
Okay.
And Ms. Dellinger seconded that.
I have a motion and a second. Now, we're, we're still in discussion about what's on the blue list and what we want to add, what we want to take off. And with Mr. Hale telling us all this, that's going to...
I have a question though. So far, based on that motion, what's our price tag?
Well, that's what we're...
Well, I mean now, before we start, whatever.
Well, our price tag is 2.9 million dollars, taken out of fund balance. Not doing nothing on that list.
Okay.
Right? That's what... Okay.
So where you are at 2.9 million, if you do a half a percent raise, you've got 250,000 dollars out there to play with. You're saying 200 of that is to go to CTE program. You're saying part of it's go fund the math program, which is 28,200, meaning you still have around 21,000 dollars to play with that you can add stuff to this list if you stay at 2.9 million from the fund balance.
And that's not doing nothing that's in the blue or the purple or whatever color that is.
Um, yeah, and I'm totally colorblind. So you've got, the only thing up on that screen there is the GMM math program that's part of that motion. You know, because the textbooks are already in. And then 200,000 is going to CTE.
So this is money that we are funding that doesn't include the commission, right? Am I asking you?
Correct.
I'm pointing you out.
It is money coming out of our fund balance.
Yes.
Is it, is this what we did last year as well?
We didn't do 2.9 million.
We did.
And we can't do that next year, I can tell you. But this is a one-time, one-shot thing where your, you know, there's textbooks being bought. There's 200,000 to CTE program.
Okay.
Next year, just realize we got to get it, we'll have to get that back down next year.
I want to spend as much money as we can on CTE. Please do not think I don't want to. But is it the, this, is this the time to do it? Or is it, do we need to do this other stuff that was going on that list? I mean, we've, we've, we had to take a break. And I want Brad to finish going down the list before we go any further.
And with that, Mrs. Fink was going to give us a, a wish, well, a priority list, right?
Well, i- i- if, to be honest about it, it should have been on that list right there.
Okay.
That should have been what we, that's the wish list.
Okay.
That's the wish list right there that we've always had.
Mr.?
Uh, yeah, Ms. Dellinger had a question a minute ago about have we used fund balance before?
Right.
Is Brad, if, if the numbers on here are right, we, we did budget 1.785 million of use of fund balance in the current fiscal year. But we believe we're going to add money to fund balance.
I still believe that it's likely we're tracking to add. The only variable is what happens to sales tax in May and June's numbers.
Okay.
If that wasn't a question for May and June, I would be very confident saying we're going to add a good, you know...
Couple million dollars.
Well, I don't know there'd be a couple million this year, but I, I think it would have been possible to have added a million. But now we don't know because we know sales tax is going to be affected when we get May and June's number. And then?
So I, I just want to, I guess, to share my opinion on the list totally. The first, the, the school administrative raise and the athletic coaching raise, yes, they probably need that. But this being the, this year of the COVID, I just think those things are just something that, you know, we're going to have to attend to next year. Um, the family life teacher, we never ever use it. We put it in the budget every year and we can't find anybody that's there. So taking that out, we give us eighty-four thousand dollars to play with. Um, behavioral therapists, why can't we just cut that to one? Because special projects or special federal money is going to carry, cover one of those. And we cut the social person in half. The technology person, I asked to be, that to be put on there because of our safety issues. Because there's cameras and all those things setting up at the warehouse, supposed to be in our schools, but they're not there because we don't have the two people working on that to put it in. The home economics teacher, that's not needed. We, we have two home economics teachers, one at Crockett, one at Boone. And, you know, that can be taken off the list. That was a wish because the fact that our dashboard for PSBA says that's the one, the number one CTE growing program in our region. And so for me, that was, it was important to, you know, put money into the place that says we're growing the most. But again, with this year being the way it is, you know, we've done without it all this time. We can do without it more. Maintenance Department Secretary, we've done without it all this time. We can do without it. I do not think we can go without this assistant principal at Boon's Creek. It is too big. It, it's too much on two people. And I really think that needs to be done. Um, the Get More Math is a great program. Add that to it. But the Unified Classroom Parish School, that's eighty thousand dollars. We can do that without that one more year. You know, the school compier allocation, can we not, can they not do without it one more year? They've been doing without it. Um, you know, the things that we've been doing without, those are the things we need to look at slendering things down. But, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with the, with the safety. Um, Dr. Flannery is really concerned with the behavioral side. I mean, the behavioral therapist and the emotional therapist. If, I mean, we can cut those down to one. Um, you know, maybe with a midway counselor, we can, you know, let the kids maybe use the ones at Crockett and Boone and, and give them time, maybe some days to be able to, to stay a little bit after school starts and then pick them up late. I don't know, there, there could be something worked out there to where they could, we could meet the needs with their homeschool therapist. But the things we've been doing about, I just feel like we need to do without. But that family life teacher, I think we just need to take it off and be done this year because we, we've placed it in the budget and placed it in the budget and it's never filled. And that's all.
Keith?
Hey. May I just quick comment? Uh, Dr. Flannery, I was totally kidding while I go. When I said, when I said you should ask me before you made the list, though.
I did. But I get it, I know.
No, what I was going to say, you know, real quick, I don't take any of this lightly. And I don't want anybody thinking we do. And I know we all care about everything on this list and I know it's super important. But what, what Mr. Urban was saying, you know, it should have been on this list. I don't like what's on this list. But I think we all know how important that CTE program is.
I agree.
We wouldn't argue that, I know nobody would. So maybe those people don't ask because they've never been given anything to grow that program so they know they're not going to get it. I'm just, you know, want to stress that, you know.
Mr. Hammond's?
Well, I just want to thank the director and his staff for putting this budget together. And one thing that mentioned was the midway counselor. Is there any way the midway and Asbury counselor could be fine?
Yes.
Oh, I'd like that idea.
Good idea.
And the other thing is, as far as CTE, uh, yeah, five years ago was the time for putting more money to it. And we hear every year that the CTEs, uh, whether we go to state conferences or whatever, and I, I really think any money we can put towards CTE, it start right away. Let's just, he said. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gangre, do you have something? Jan?
Yes, I, I, I love appreciating Ms. Buchanan saying that. And, uh, I'd like to, I want to ask a question. On the 4,800, you didn't have them down for the AEP page, Jason, is that correct? Only thing you added was the Get More Math.
That's the only thing we did was Get More Math. And then there was like 21,000 left over to keep us in the 2.9 that Mr. Hale's comfortable with.
Okay. So, I mean, if we just sped, I don't want to ask a question on that sped federal fund, the one position, one position for the behavioral therapist, psychiatrist therapist, will they still do that if we don't fund the other one?
If you don't fund it, we will probably steer some of that CARES Act money toward that if we're allowed to. That would be a prime use of federal money.
Well, I just see workers, they said federal is going to pay for one. So if you wanted two, I guess one for North Wonders.
The, the dollar amounts entered into that spreadsheet would actually just pay for one. So I think the, that they put that in there, that one will be picked up and fed. And they're asking for additional because of heating and stuff. But I'm telling you that we will probably be able to add even one more using the CARES Act.
Well, can I amend, can I make an amendment to Jason's motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. But we're, we need to get a figure of what, what it's going to be with what we're adding to this purple that's on this colored list. Right? Is that not what I'm, I mean, what are we in the, in that list?
Or the 250,000, or 202...
Show me that list.
Four.
Roll that down.
2.85, right, Brad?
So you're going to, you're going to add 55,000. You're going to add the, uh... The, uh, Boon's Creek Assistant Principal, right?
I, I don't think we can do without it. I mean...
Well, I, it's not, we're doing without it now, but...
There were struggles.
We're, I understand, but we're adding. We're adding more to it.
Yeah, I know.
To the list.
Right. We're really not doing that because you approved hiring a part-time assistant principal months ago.
But we got that on that list.
Yeah.
It's on there.
Could we get by with a part-time?
Um, and when I say part-time, I meant, um, interim, not part-time.
Well, no, I'm talking about next year when we have our principal and assistant.
Yes, ma'am, we could.
We can get by within a, a part-time.
Have someone teach part of the day and serve in administrative capacity.
I like that idea better, yeah.
If that is possible.
Uh-huh. And let them mainly de- deal with discipline.
Or I U P.
Yeah, oh, that would be good.
Which are so, such a big part of the program.
Well, how much ballpark would that get? Uh, cut in half. Cut in half, I like that better.
I mean, we're adding, we're taking stuff off that list and adding it to that 2.9.
I have a question for Dr. Flannery. How are we, nothing is being on here about technology. Are we still ready to roll out in the fall with a item per student, a device per student?
Can't say that definitively, but yeah, we're getting real close. And disclosure has demonstrated just how important that is.
Oh, my goodness.
I would say that over half of our schools right now is one-to-one, including the two biggest schools. And given the continued support of the county probation with the capital money, we're getting, we may be a year, maybe two away from going one-to-one.
So our, both of our high schools are one-to-one devices?
Yes, and their small schools are one-to-one. And we have others that are either close or, or going to be, I don't know.
Thank you. So we, we don't need the money for that. We're already good with what's...
Won't say no, but we are in pretty good shape as far as its purchase of technology.
Right, thank you.
Jason, I'm going to ask if you would withdraw your motion, right? Because I'm going to do something different. I'm going to go over everything on this list and I'm going to ask the board to vote yes or no.
Are we going to discuss everything on the list or just go through it?
We're going to go through it and we're going to, everybody, we've done discussed the list. Now we're going to add, we're going to vote on each one of them things that's on that list. Okay? And then we'll bring up the CTE at the end. I'm asking that as a...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, like, I'll withdraw.
You withdraw your second? Okay. All right. School adminis- Chad?
Well, the only thing I've got, Keith, I mean, I, I know you're trying to circle cats, right? Gather them around right here, but...
I can circle them around.
Uh?
Go ahead.
No, I just want to see, I mean, I like the 200,000 for CTE, but if we go down through this list and we put 400,000 on it, I mean, all of a sudden the CTE is not going to get there. I mean, I understand what you're doing, don't get me wrong. But I also would like to...
I've gone through this list.
See where that 200,000 is going to go and what kind of industry certifications will we pick up? Will, you know, what are we, what will we gain with our dollars? But I'm afraid if you go down through this list right here, that we'll lose sight of that.
All right. Well, let me ask you this. Do you think, given the teach, the, the school administrators, a thousand dollars is more important than, uh, CTE? If you feel that way, then vote for it. If you don't, don't vote for it. That's the way I'm going, that's the way I'm looking at things. Okay? Coach is something.
Yeah.
Vote for it or don't vote for it. And then when we get done, we'll see what we got. I don't want to use my fund balance no more than I have to. That's my opinion.
Before we do anything, we're at 2.9 right now, right? Before we add any of this list Keith's going over.
Well, we've, we've done... That was at one percent. So if, if the one percent's pulled off the table, then, you know, that, we know a quarter of a percent has to be there for certified online.
Okay.
The quarter percent has to be there.
Yep.
All right. Number one, school administrator raises.
You going to roll call?
Roll call vote.
Throw them wrong.
Go ahead, roll call vote.
You don't need a more motion than a second for each one, or?
Well, I, we're, it's...
This, I think...
Do I need a motion and a second?
Without a motion, you're all talking about the truth and really trying to say... Well, are, are you just trying to get a, a feel for which ones are supported and which ones aren't?
Yes, and then he's trying to get a total dollar amount.
Yeah, I mean, that's like what they do, yeah.
Okay. All right.
That way you're not spending money.
We're not spending money, we're just adding up what it's going to cost. Well, I don't know what else to do. We're, like Chad said, we're hurting cats. I don't like it, let's do it. All right.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
And, and what is this for? I'm so sorry, but I've, I've lost my guess.
The school administrator increase?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangre?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No. Athletic coaching supplements. Roll call.
Mr. Hammond?
Well, is this for additional coaches?
It's a given of additional money to the coaches' supplements.
No.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangre?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
CTE incentive to teachers?
Ms. Dellinger?
At a cost of...
Thirty thousand.
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Thirty-five thousand, correct, Brad?
Yeah, with fixed costs, thirty-five thousand, one seventy-eight.
I'm going to say no because I think they'd like the equipment better.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangre?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
Family life.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangre?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
No. Groundskeeper, grounds position.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangre?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
No. Coaches, uh, golf coach, two golf coach supplements. Now, let me ask this question. Are we adding two more golf?
No, that is a completely random thing. We don't have it now, Mr. Flannery.
This is for elementary school?
Elementary school.
Middle school, right?
There's like one on each side.
So it's a, another, it's a new sport. It, it's a, it's a sport, but we're adding it to the middle school?
It's, we actually have it, but now it created supplement for the people that are serving as coaches already.
Okay. They're not getting paid anyway. All right.
So it will be sanctioned by the board and it would, you know, had to leave earlier, things like that.
We go on to Tennessee, they'll still have lives and hope.
Okay.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangre?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
I'm going to say yes because it's, we, we got him, so. Which it fails anyway. Behavior therapies, therapist.
Before we go down that, what's the difference between that one and, uh, the two behavioral psychologists? Or the, the one we're going to come up to in two more lines?
Dr. Kite explained the difference, but I don't, I don't know if you know any of the details on that, Dr. Flannery. But, I mean, the ones, the one are psychologists where this one was just a different, you know, it's not a psych.
It's, this one says fifty percent grant, the others don't.
Right. Sped, Sped, um, thought they could fund half of that position. Dr. Myers did, so at the time we met.
Yeah, I just, I just think mental health is something that's becoming more and more, uh, important. You know, we've got kids coming from, you know, bad places. Um, but I wanted to know what the difference in those two were. I don't know if Dr. Kite's still on it.
Training, specialization, and the services that they divide are different. Um, the behavioral therapist, um, I would say if we don't do something there, we're going to do it in court.
Carla's ready to speak.
Go ahead, Carla.
We were just trying to get, just as was mentioned by one of the board members, to do more with the mental health and some of the behavior problems and start a type of program that would involve two people, and the behaviorist and then the psychologist. That was, that was the goal of that. We do not currently have anything like that, but with the needs that we are seeing in the help that's being offered from the different hospitals and the pediatricians, it was a goal prior to any of this happening with the coronavirus.
Does any of that any way tie into our coordinated health program?
No.
It is completely separate?
It's separate. I mean, it, it's all working together, all of us work together. But it, it, this was a separate type of, of program.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangre?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah.
Did that get added?
Yes.
Yes.
For now. Guidance counselor midway?
Mr. McLean?
Uh... Is this a totally new position I had to ask that now?
Yes. I thought I heard a minute ago that this could be split with, uh...
Combined.
Combined with the guidance counselor that's at Asbury. Combined with the guidance counselor that's at Asbury.
They won't like it, but they'll have to.
So, so how do I need to vote on this then?
No.
No. Your conscience. They did.
Vote yourself.
No.
If we vote this one down, he's gonna come out.
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Fleaner?
I'm sorry to say yes, but I, I didn't hear some of the sidebar comment, uh, their answers to, um, Dr. or Mr. McLean's, uh, questions. This could be shared between Midway and, and, uh, Asbury?
It is possible to do so, and Asbury already has a full-time counselor.
Asbury what?
Asbury already has a full-time counselor.
Okay, no ma'am, thank you. No.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
No. Two behavior physical therapists, Fed, Fed, fund one position. Can we go with one? And let Fed fund it? That's, that's my question. It says two. And Fed federal fund one position.
Now, I reminded you, it's in there, it was just four.
Yeah, that's just.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's one position in the general fund, but Fed says they can pick up an extra position, so. The request was two, but Fed can fund one of those out of federal. Okay, so we're talking about the one in general funds. If this will be your vote, you'll see if you fund it out of, the one out of general.
Oh, Chad, wait a minute.
Yes, can I, can I ask a question to Dr. Flannery, Dr. Kite, Dr. Myers? Did you say yes?
Yes.
I see that you've got two behavioral psychologists slash therapists, two social emotional psychiatrists slash therapists. If we wanted to fund two, we're getting one for free on that behavior psychiatrists deal. We, I guess what I'm saying is, what's your priority to Dr. Kite and Dr. Myers and Dr. Flannery? If we were just going to fund one out of those two people, uh, whether it be the second, the next line or this line that we're voting on, which one would be the most beneficial?
I don't know the difference between those two.
It would come from Dr. Kite or Myers, I guess.
Yes.
Carla's here, Carla's down there.
So the question, Ken, could you clarify the question there? I got lost in that, of the two positions. What the, I think the, the thinking behind that, if this would help any, we would have one, we would have one program, both those, those different people on one side of the county, and, and the same type of program on the other side of the county was the intent. Would it be, the, decided to even have one program that could try to address the most at need, in need on both sides of the county, on both sides? Yes. Does that help any?
Yeah, I just wondered if we just, if which one was the priority? Would it be this one, this line we're voting on now? Or we get one for free with the Fed, you know, the federal funding?
Right.
Would be better, we'd be better off with the next two? If we had a choice, I guess, Dr. Kite, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but just wondering which one's more important, or which one you felt were better with?
Sir, uh, sir, are you saying, you know, would you rather have of, an additional behavioral psychologist therapist, or would you rather have a social emotional therapist? Is that what you're saying, Chad?
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I didn't know if the board would go along with both, so I just would want, I just wanted everybody to hear which one. I mean, I think we definitely need these, but do we need four? I, the reason I wonder which one's priority, I guess it would be the first one.
The priority would be one of each, instead of two.
I have a comment from Dr. Myers. She says that, uh, we can't get help from, uh, East Tennessee State with the psychiatrist, but her, her greatest need, she says, is a board-certified behavioral therapist. And they do have money for one, and she would like an additional position.
So we're getting, but we're getting one, Dr. Flannery, regardless, because we have federal funds to get them.
Mandy says she has money for one half of that position.
Right, and we, 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 yeah, some of the other half.
They approved that.
We already approved that one.
Okay.
Said we like it.
If you don't take it out, you approved it.
Anything else? Roll call.
So what are we roll calling on?
The.
The physical.
Physical therapist.
Got you, okay.
One.
Because Dr. Dr. Kite, I understood, Dr. Kite, she said she already had one of those. She would prefer to have.
Two.
No, she would prefer to have some, a, a person from the next line.
Okay.
The psychiatrist?
Yes, that's what I understood her to say, that she would prefer to have one of each.
All right. Yep.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Fleaner?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Right, Fed.
Did I get on there?
Yes.
All right. Emotional. What is?
That's it, there is a PhD in psychiatry.
And it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars for?
For two.
Two of them on that.
So. Two hundred, is it two hundred and ten, twenty thousand, or just, that is?
Fifty-five thousand.
Okay, fifty-five a piece.
But that's what I thought, Dr. Kite said she'd rather had.
Well, that's what I thought.
One of those, yeah.
Okay.
Now wait, okay. So I understood you wanted the last position that.
I think she said she wanted one of each, didn't she?
Right, and she's already got one of the one we just voted on, and I think what she was looking for, if Dr. Kite's still on there, she could clarify it, that she was looking for another position that, uh, a psych- psychiatrist therapist for social and emotional.
Which one did she want first, is what I want to know.
She's already got one.
Well, okay.
She's already got one.
It would be good to have behaviors and then the psychologist. If we could just have one of each, if that's, if, it would be great to do that, try to get that program started for the emotional, uh, and behavioral needs of our children. Again, this plan was prior to coronavirus, but it, that would be great. We wanted two, meaning Dr. Myers and I, one on each side of the county. If that's not possible, and we can get a position through ETSU, one of those positions funded, then we could have the other, other physician then, and that would at least get one of each position in the county to get started. Does that make sense?
Yes, what I understood, yeah.
Okay, roll call, so we're voting on one or two here.
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we just voted on one.
Okay, we're voting on one. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna cut these numbers in half, right, since we're taking that down to one. We're voting on one, one position, right?
But there's going to be two behavioral socks, right?
Well.
Is that passed?
Well, that's, that's what everybody thought, but once you, the doctors, you may not want to stick that in. Then we'll pull that one out.
Actually, it is just one, and then one would be with federal funds.
Correct.
So, we actually did just do one.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Now, this is fifty-five, right?
Yes.
I just dropped it down, yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Fleaner?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah. Okay, technician.
So is this technician to work with, uh, uh, I can't think of his name.
Vince.
Vince?
Vince. Larry?
Or was this to work with Chromebooks, that I thought didn't require a whole lot of maintenance?
I believe the intent was to work under courtesy for the installation of equipment that has been purchased. Cameras essentially, like, um.
So he'd be working with Vince then?
Maybe separately, but doing much the same job. It wouldn't be a help, Vince has a helper, this would be somewhat of an equal or parallel to him.
Roll call.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fleaner?
No ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
Did I pass?
No.
Home economics teacher.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Fleaner?
No ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Nope.
Mr. Irvin?
No. Maintenance secretary.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Fleaner?
No ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yep.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
He doesn't, I can't do it this year. We should have already done it.
Assistant principal at Boons Creek Elementary.
So are we, are we cutting that in half and making it a halftime teacher and halftime?
Up to you.
I, I like that idea. Someone that.
I agree.
Somebody, somebody that already has their, uh, supervision could do part, part one deck one time and part the other, correct?
Well, of course, we may have to move somebody from another school to fill that bill.
Well.
And imagine anybody on that faculty, but.
Right, but I, I still think that would be, yeah, that would be a little more, more doable as far as the money wise.
I disagree, but the board wants a halftime position, we may have to do a little more.
Well, which, right, okay. So that would bring it, well, are we gonna vote for which? Do we have to?
I got a question.
Let me hear, what?
Okay.
Um, now, we, we voted to hire an interim assistant principal, right?
Yes.
On a hundred and twenty day contract.
Okay, which is how much money?
Well, depends on who they are.
Well.
But, but roughly, had if the person that got hired worked the full hundred and twenty days and the max hour she could work is about forty-two thousand.
Okay, so we already had that in the budget.
It's a different.
So we just need, uh, we just need another half
Yeah.
of that salary to fill a full-time position, correct?
We do have another line, though, that hundred and twenty day contracts come out of.
Okay.
So in essence, what you approved before was allocated with hundred and twenty day contract money. This, I'm assuming would, this would not be a hundred and twenty day contracted money, so we would need to.
Well, unless you pulled it out of that line, unless you pulled it out of that line, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, you're gonna have a certain amount every year of hundred and twenty day contracts and money, so, I mean, you might be able to, but
Right.
you just, you might go short too, so. But, but if you're, if the board's saying to cut this in half, then I'll, I'll cut these dollar amount in half here.
But I think what you're talking about was the job just, uh, to replace, uh, the principal, right? Is that the job you were talking about that we approved?
We had an interim assistant.
Till the end of the year, right?
Right.
Until this, uh.
So we just need to, we just, but we've already got those dollars in the budget somewhere. All we need to do is add to them to end up with a full-time position.
I don't.
We can use the money after, out of the hundred and twenty day contract stuff, I don't think.
Why, why, why?
Why can't we, we know.
I mean, you may go short. I mean, I'm just saying, you may go short on a hundred and twenty day contract next year.
And then we can back, and we add it for some. Come on here.
Well, but.
Chad, go ahead.
Hey, I would, I would love to take forty-two thousand out of the one hundred and twenty day contract and come up with another eighteen thousand to fill this full-time position. Can I make that as a motion? Can we change this letter right here to say that? Because we've already got forty-two thousand approved. It's just in a different line item. What, uh, what Mr. Meredith's saying is move that forty-two to this and come up with another eighteen, and we'd be voting on the eighteen thousand. Can I do that, please, or make that motion?
I don't see how that's even possible.
Do, do this like we did where we cut that, we had two positions that were a hundred and ten, and we made it fifty-five. What you need to do is just make this the difference, the delta to get you to a full salary.
I mean, we're only talking eighteen thousand while we, while we're out of budget. I mean, that's, uh, the lowest thing we've approved so far, so. I've got, I'd like to get some, I mean, I'd like to show you some more information of why they need this with some, uh, some, some things I need to get together, but I mean, we're only talking eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, I, I don't think there could be anybody that would vote against eighteen thousand dollars. If we could make that a part of that, that makes it more palatable than sixty thousand.
Where do you get the eighteen, where do you get the forty?
The forty-two thousand was a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty day. There's no use to fill that hundred and twenty day contract. Get out of that line item and add it to this.
And she is supposed to end at the end of the year.
But we put forty-two thousand dollars in it.
It's in the budget.
We already have forty-two thousand in the budget.
That's right.
There's no use to have it in there. I mean, we didn't think, come up with another eighteen thousand. Is that correct, Brad? My crazy?
You still have fixed costs that you gotta consider. It's, uh, the full price of this position would be sixty thousand plus, on average, twenty, if you include the insurance, fixed costs, so.
So at the, if it's a. Leave the twenty in there and add the eighteen.
Barry Bass is asking, was that position not to expire at the end of school?
Yep.
Yeah, well, I've got another question. Is the attendance, uh, the enrollment at Boons Creek, how close are we at Ridgeview? I mean, where do we draw the line to a full-time assistant?
Well, I'll, I'll get this information to you if you want to see it, because just an SRO, I'd like to see how many SRO reports were coming out of Ridgeview versus Creek.
I mean, pretty soon Ridgeview's gonna want to ask for a full-time, another assistant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Boons Creek does have, uh, issues they deal with that Ridgeview doesn't. And, uh, it's a bigger school too, as far as the square footage. There, there's definitely a need there. I'm talking behavior-wise, um, all across the board.
Boons Creek is about seventy students large.
Seventy students more.
There's no research that shows that.
But you're.
I can't point to anything that says, here's where you can hire an additional. I can't point anything that says here's where you can hire an additional one.
I still think the...
All right, all right, we're getting a little out of hand here, we're gonna make, we're gonna vote, do you wanna put a Boons Creek principal in there or not?
We don't know how much it's gonna be.
It's gonna be sixty thousand or...
Plus twenty.
Plus twenty?
Eight.
Gonna be eight.
So...
But we'll...
We're gonna vote.
Okay.
But...
Chad, what?
Where, where's the forty-two thousand then that are still in the budget?
It's, it's, it's out there in that budget, it's in there. So, where?
Hundred and twenty day contract.
It's a hundred and twenty day contract, forty-two thousand.
Why can't we take that forty-two thousand out and put it against this, can I all do that?
I, I understand what you're saying, but...
Not that simple.
It's not that simple, but I understand exactly what you're saying, I understand, we could take forty-two thousand from a hundred and twenty day contract... And put it in there.
And we'll be short on the hundred and twenty day contract.
And we'll be short on the hundred and twenty day contract.
If you put it in your position, if you use it.
Well, why would we need another assistant principal though, out there somewhere? Is what I'm saying, why couldn't we just erase that forty-two thousand and say we don't have another until it comes up in front of the board again?
Well, the way I look at it, we have erased it.
Yeah.
We've erased it, now we've gone up...
For twelve months.
That forty-two thousand would go into our fund balance, and we're voting to, to, to use sixty thousand out of our fund balance.
Would you not agree?
See what I'm saying?
Would you not agree for a part-time?
I'd like to see a full-time, I don't think you can tell somebody if they're getting fat, we'll wait this minute after one and we'll get the, the principal.
Boy token, boy token.
Well, that's valid. It's one of the buckets in there.
Is that, am I looking at it wrong?
I... Pay a thirty-dollar salary off, so you can't, I tell them about my... No, I did, I got a eighty thousand dollar savings for you, buddy.
See, if we stay on twenty-five percent from last year, twenty-five percent times your budget number is an eighty thousand dollar savings.
I never imagined, I know. It might be that way next year, we don't know.
Well, let's go there.
Hey, oil, we gotta go at oil.
Are we gonna vote, what are we doing?
Well, I'm listening.
You're joking, you're not.
I had to stand up.
He's done talking, he's making a vote.
I, I'm, I'm wanting to know why we can't do that eighteen thousand.
Can you not tell him the forty-two's not really there for me? You can't add something that's like that.
The forty-two come out of fund balance, 'cause we voted to do it.
That was in this year, not next year.
That was in this year, that's, that's, that's right. Exactly.
But it's, it's already in the budget that he's adding money to, it's already in the budget that's rolling forward to next year.
Yeah, I don't see no forty-two thousand taking out anything in here to say that...
We took it, we took it out of fund balance.
Chad, I, I think everybody sees what you're saying, if Keith, if Keith nailed it a minute ago, we just need to forget... To worry about amending or making a motion or whatever, we all just need to understand that forty-two's there, we need to add thirty-eight thousand when we vote, we need to keep in mind we're gonna add thirty-eight thousand to the budget, correct? And, and I get what you want.
Good.
Roll call vote, please.
No, but what we're working on, it's sixty, it's eight.
It's sixty.
Roll, roll call vote.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah. Okay. The math, have we added, is that been added already, Brad?
Let's vote on it.
Okay, we ain't voting, so... All right, we're gonna vote on the math. Roll call.
Get more math.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Yes. Nice.
Certified classroom power school?
Unified.
Unified? Certified, okay, Chad?
Just a question on the get more math, that is a reoccurring cost, it'll be every year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, covers eleven schools.
Now, this power school, is any of this gonna be reoccurring, if so, how much?
Every bit of it's reoccurring every year, although we think that after the first year it may go down to about sixty thousand, second year.
What is it?
I'd like to make a comment though, now, this power school is in five places in our strategic plan, five years' strategic plan, that we all approve.
Roll call.
Did you have a question, Mr. McLean, or what did you?
What is it?
It's an ad on the power school, it, it's a test thing is what it amounts to, it lets individual teachers generate standards-based assessments, uh, bench, to benchmark kids on where they are in getting ready for tests. We currently have nothing, we're the only school system in northeast Tennessee that does it. We make our benchmarks in-house, personally, I think that's a good idea, but, uh, supervisors around here think this is the end-all be-all.
So, it's eighty thousand dollars.
For one year.
For one damn thing.
I know where you can get it, take it out of diesel.
Roll call.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah.
Nice.
Now...
Those are CTE?
That Aaron Dole says are next year.
Wow.
School copler, copier application? Allocation, allocation?
That is just funding, uh, additional funding to help the schools out with their copier expenses, they leave copiers every year, so, they're still getting a certain amount in the budget, it's been in there for years, so this is just adding additional funding.
They go over their budget, they have to pay for it out of their own funds.
Oh, out of the activity.
This, this school, yes, so they struggle, some schools struggled with, with paying that.
And this is for every school, this is system-wide, okay?
That, that amount would be divided out.
I was gonna say, I know some schools have to do several fundraisers to supplement that, okay?
Roll call.
Mr. Flainer?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah. CTE teacher supplies.
Can I ask how much they're getting now? Do they currently get teacher supplies now?
They do, I guess we add seven, eight percent of what they already do, I think we're funding about seventy-five, eighty thousand a year.
I'm thinking eighty-two is what, what's in there for everything, so...
There has been raised once in thirty years.
Roll call.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Chad?
All right, Chad, I'm sorry.
No, I, I had a question, I don't understand this, you know, how that's gonna be split up, or how, you know, I, I don't understand anything about that, I hate to say it's not important, but I don't understand that.
Every program will be an A program.
Even though some may have five periods of it and some may just have one?
Who just has one? Am I just teaching one section? I took, the way I always did it, if we had a teacher, we did have a teacher at Croft, but I always did it, if they just taught three periods, I divided by how many periods it's been a day and just give them that allocation. I don't think we've got any part-time teachers.
I mean, it may be different things, is what I'm saying, it's like art, you may just have one art teacher at, say, Boons Creek, you may have one art teacher at Fall Branch, if you're giving the same money, it doesn't go very far at one place and it does other.
It won't be much, I think we've got twenty-nine CTE teachers and every one of them gets about eighteen hundred dollars a year in supply of money and they'll all get an equal in- increase if you teach classes. I believe that's Christmas and Sam.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Uh, wouldn't this be covered under the CTE money, we're looking at putting in that...
That's gone, brother.
Uh, no.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Nice.
You say it be it?
Yes.
CTE equipment.
Yep.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Um, yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
This is for five thousand, I'm so sorry. No, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
Nice.
It be it?
Yes.
Two to go.
Attendance, discipline, department, travel.
Do they already get money to travel with?
Yes.
Okay.
This is what went over, Greg.
It, it's like, he travels a lot in one year and then the next year he doesn't, then he travels a lot and he doesn't, so, most years, every other year he'll go, oh, oh, why we're gonna do so? But even, I don't understand.
Brad, so question, we've got six thousand in the budget currently, so, we're gonna ramp that up to eleven-three? How many people does that encompass?
Yeah, Mr. Murphy and two, two that help him, and they, they, the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Flannery, but if he goes to both of the big conferences and what he's supposed to go to in the year, that's about what it's been costing. So, uh...
On the other hand, he doesn't necessarily have to take.
Right, yeah.
If you don't fund it, you just can't do it.
Good point.
Roll call.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
No. All right, the pads for the cleaning.
Is, wow, well...
We can't not.
Okay, you wanna take that completely off, we're gonna buy them anyway.
We're gonna buy those, I have to take it out of car account itself.
Okay.
We cannot, not have those.
I'll just take this off the list altogether.
All right. Now... What kinda raise?
I...
You've got enough to do a quarter of a percent raise and keep the fund balance where it is, uh, pretty much. So, what you've agreed to spend is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, the quarter of a percent raise is a hundred and twenty, so you're at five-twenty. Um, let me go back to, now, this is with keeping the fund balance at two-point-nine million, you can up it by, if you choose to, I mean...
So, what would it be if we went to a half a percent?
Yes.
Um, another hundred and twenty in addition, so...
The total would be?
So, we're gonna add two hundred and forty thousand to the three-eighty-nine, um, so... So, I got that in my head, I guess, six hundred, six-twenty-nine, so I'm gonna go back now to the budget sheet. And I don't know what my... System's doing, okay. So, now, um... At two-point-nine million, okay? This is back to where nothing was in there, with the exception of the textbooks. Yes, the textbooks were all in there, we had one forty-seven, we added to seven thirty-seven to come up with that number. So, we have four hundred and eighty-three, eight-seventy-seven to play with, and we just spent... Four eighty-three, eight-seventy-seven's what we had to play with. We just spent six-twenty-nine, if we do a half a percent raise, we need to add a hundred and forty-five thousand, so that means we'll need to take the funded, budgeted fund balance pool to three million forty-five thousand... To do a half percent raise for everyone and add everything that you've just asked. And if we do this, just understand next year, a year from now, we gotta cut that in maybe in half or more, I mean, come next year.
And see, some of these are going to be occurring, we're gonna have to do them again next year too, anyway.
And if, if we really do pull three million from the fund balance, uh, we gotta cut it down next year to where we're about pulling nothing probably, you know, so...
I make a motion that we go for the half percent for, raise for everyone, plus what we voted on.
And you said we were, it takes us, how much do we use in there, some down three?
Three million and forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
And one, one eighty-three, or we'll say one eighty-four, we'll just round up to next time.
So, if you add it, if you add another two hundred and five thousand of that for CTE, then you get an even three, three and a quarter million.
Yeah, and you're gonna give me a heart attack, but okay.
But it's one-time money, but the CTE's got one-time money.
I know, I know.
Could we go one thousand for CTE?
You mean a hundred thousand.
I mean, a hundred, I'm sorry.
Jason, try and get some money there, buddy.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Well, you want to forget it completely.
I'm not gonna say that, I'm, I'm, I'm giving you a heart attack.
What's the county gonna do, are they gonna raise?
I, uh, they haven't gotten there yet, they only...
Max.
I mean, you know, as I said earlier, I think that's the first thing that any, uh, anybody oughta, any legislative body oughta look at first is what they're gonna do for, for employees, and then everything else is secondary.
And since the state has sent half, I know, a quarter of a percent, we're only coming up with the quarter percent for our certified employees, right?
That's what they're requiring us to put into the budget.
Certified.
For certified.
Certified, but, yeah, I see what you mean.
And, and the state didn't calculate that quarter of a percent, I had to calculate that based on that three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, they said you are required to put that into your overall certified staff salary. I had to figure how much the step increase for certified only ate up of that three thirty-six, and then how much is still there, it actually, it factored out to be a quarter of a percent.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hammond?
A question, and I'm glad I'm at home asking this, uh, could we look at travel across the system, the school system, and just see, I mean, I know there's a lot of conferences that are necessary, but from the top to the bottom, and just get a number on that for the next budget meeting, including tool board?
Now, I'll say this, with the exception of this one, Ken, I don't think we're running red on any travel, do you?
Yeah, yeah, there are some that will have money left over in travel, some categories, this, this one's just not, this specific one, was the, this specific one was the only one that looked like it needed.
Chad?
And a lot of it could be used at, at the director's discretion, what he thinks, going, but I, I just like to have an upper because of what, like that even school board, and I'm not saying we cut out all travel, but we don't know what next year's gonna be like, this next school year, and we don't tell us that's being...
A lot of conferences may not happen, so it may take care of itself. If I want.
We'll spend, how much on, uh, just follow consults and managers for the school? I haven't hoped for myself.
Thousands of dollars, yeah, I can run a quick report on the travel to...
Should we look at what budget, what we're adding spending over maybe two years?
Okay.
I, I'm just saying, all together, I'm just saying, we don't know what we're up against this year, 'cause the numbers aren't in, and we might have to make more cuts, so... It's just a thought.
Chad, go ahead.
Everybody's making sacrifices right now.
Chad, you had some?
Yes, I would like to, um, ask that Ms. Flink come back with the two hundred thousand dollar wish list and what kinda certification we would get out of that money, and just adjourn for the night that we don't have to make any decisions on anything until we find out those numbers. And just adjourn for the night that we don't have to make any decisions on anything until we find out those numbers.
We can, we cannot adjourn, we have to have a budget to go by May first. It has to be a budget in hand. Mr. Gangler?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
All right.
I have a motion, but I don't have a second, Mary Beth, so go ahead and let's hear you.
I'd like to make a motion that we give a one percent raise, see what the total is, and ask the commission that we'll take half out of our fund balance and they take the other half, they, they cover the other half.
I'll second.
Does that include pulling in the, the yellow?
Everything we've done tonight, instead of a half percent, a, a one percent raise, pulling half of the fund, out of our fund balance and asking the commission to fund the other half.
Okay.
No CTEs?
Didn't make it, man.
So what that will mean?
Okay.
What that will mean?
And raise on the college.
Request for the county commission to fund half of that one percent.
So what that'll mean?
Half of the total.
You need to train this bunch of little things on the job.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So what that'll mean is we'll still be budgeting three million forty-five thousand one eighty-four to come out of our fund balance, because that's the half of percent raise, plus everything y'all voted on, so you're wanting the county to pick up the other half to make, to make it a full one percent raise. So that would mean we'll be asking the county for roughly about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, I'm asking, I don't know what the total is, I'm just throwing this number out, it's four million, say we're out, I balance, we'll fund two million, we're asking them for two million.
Oh, okay, so. Okay, give me a second to read it down.
So that's pitching about three point three, three point four out of, out of balance, right Brad, at one percent?
I'm gonna amend his motion if I could.
We don't have a second.
When we get a second?
They working on the number, they working on the number.
Yeah, I better, give me just a second to. Give me just a second.
Well, I mean, they can, uh, we just have to have something for them May first, they can return it.
They can.
And we can, yeah, so.
They can.
What's?
Okay, one percent.
I was holding my breath to see if Mitch would second.
Doesn't matter if I seconded or not, whether I vote for it or not. Have you ever, have you ever seconded something and then voted against it?
Well, if I seconded, I was in support of it. So I was waiting to see where your support lies.
That's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah. So we do one percent.
God, I'm hungry.
Are we gonna try, I'm, while, while he's crunching numbers, are we gonna try to have, uh, committee meetings next week or not? No?
After the chairman of the thing.
I, I mean, they would have to be.
I'd like to have finance, yes.
Okay. Could we not have it right before, like we usually do that day?
You were right on, I mean, you're real close, no, I'd rather do it in the head time. So if we did.
Be difficult.
Yeah, I mean, real close to that, because we're at two point nine million right here that we're budgeting to pull out of fund balance, so if we add that three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, that takes that to about a three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar deficit. So, but I wanna make sure I've got, got it right on what you're saying, and our, you want our budgeted fund balance to talk, because if I understood you right, you were, you were, we were gonna change that, is that?
They want to.
Is that right or am I?
Yeah, he's saying, if it's two point nine or three point four, half of it comes from the commission.
Okay.
Did you talk, I don't need.
Yes, okay.
There's something.
Yeah, McCollum.
It even has Mr. Meredith's face on it here, I thought.
So if we're adding.
Something I cut out from.
Oh, I bet you did.
I'll look back at this thought.
That's one.
Okay.
I said, we're not leaving their money. I don't know. Be tight, tight, get after, get after and rob them.
Okay. Okay, so basically, to do one percent plus that three hundred and eighty-nine thousand that you all just voted on, that takes, to make that work, we'd have to pull three million two hundred eighty-nine thousand out of fund balance. So we're gonna say we'll ask the county to fund half that, so we'll ask the county to fund, uh, one million six hundred and forty-four thousand of that.
Yes.
So in your budget, you bump that back up into your property tax revenue, I guess. You have to go somewhere to ask them to put it in the revenue stream.
I'll second that motion.
I've already got a second.
Can I make my amendment?
You, you can make your amendment.
I'll have to amend his motion, I wanna add two hundred and fifty thousand to CTE program.
Go bigger, go home, sweetie.
I have a motion and a, Chad, did you second that?
You did, Jim Brown.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second on the amendment, any more discussion?
I think we've discussed it all.
Roll call vote on the amendment?
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fleener?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Gangler?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Irvin?
That was assault.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, but it's in the right direction. So when we present this, I'm gonna say the county finance director has to answer.
Yes, you know, when I present this to them.
I don't think the county finance director is here, y'all.
I'm sure to wear a red belt.
Okay, now, on the original motion as amended. Roll call vote on that.
Then we went ahead and backed that up.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fleener?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Gangler?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Wow.
All right.
No. So since we added two fifty, since we added two fifty for the CTE, that'll up our request for the county by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it'll be about a one billion seven hundred and seventy thousand request from the county. Maybe we'll ask for additional sales tax.
Where are your kids, I mean, I don't know how you been there, I don't think you're gonna have to pay.
It's all the gas.
You gotta ask for pity?
It's all the gas on revenue anyway.
But you gotta, but you gotta ask for pity when you're going in there.
Okay, don't leave everybody, we ain't done yet.
No, morning.
Uh, we have a, what Caitlin wants to speak on dietary?
We got dietary, yeah, we still got dietary budget.
Dietary budget right now.
And I've got a, I'm gonna pull it up and give you the, uh, go over the. Over, or that, give you just a minute here, let me, let me get my general fund stuff finished here.
Dr. Flannery?
Yes.
Can the rest of us leave now?
Sure.
Good night.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, really, is it okay, it's okay then, Greg?
Yeah, go ahead, Philip, wake up.
Thank.
Unmuted. Can't hear you.
Can you send us something?
Yeah, yeah, I certainly will.
I say no, I'm not leaving, I'm very interested in what's going to happen.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure you still waiting.
I am a concerned taxpayer.
Thank you.
Thirty-two.
You're welcome.
We had a hundred and twenty-two right before we crashed.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'll give me just a second here. We'll be ready for dietary in just a second, I've just gotta make sure, yep, that, that's the number, Todd, that will be going to the county to request is one million seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars.
Oh, God.
One seven sixty-nine.
How much was it back in time?
I'm making notes so I don't forget that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and exit out of this, it's saved, and we'll pull up the dietary information, and I'll go over what, what we're looking at. There'll be a component of this that Caitlin will chime in on, but let me get that pulled back up now. So Jennifer, if you have the dietary budget on BOE Connect, she does, and I have it on our screen here. So let me just tell you what, what's here first, is you see the FY twenty budget, um, in the first column, that's already the approved budget, which was the amended budget that, um, was approved a few months back. So the FY twenty-one budget, um, I can tell you I went through each of these line items with Caitlin, and I'm satisfied with what she came up here with in the new revised revenue, it's about a, that's about a hundred and eight thousand dollar increase, and she's facing that on a couple of things. Is, um, there is a small increase usually in federal funding or her reimbursement, it's not amount to three, four percent, could be more, that is the trend there, and she also, when she looked at the amount of lunches that were sold, up until schools were closed for COVID, which I think that was March nineteenth, and compared that to the same time period last year up to March eighteenth, she was experiencing a pretty good increase in volume. So, so based on those two trends, the revenue slightly increased by about a hundred and eight thousand dollars to three point two four million. So we went through each line of that. This is with her step increases with dietary, it says step increase for FY twenty-one, and we, you can see the, most of that's pretty standard, you can see from the prior year, and then three million one seventy-three four sixty-eight is her estimated expenses, projecting about a sixty-six thousand dollar increase overall. Now, this next, uh, column is where I'll have Caitlin chime in, there is a request for the board to consider an additional five percent pay increase for all dietary employees, this would be set, totally separate from what you've just voted on for the general fund, so this is separate, um, from that. So with that, uh, Caitlin, if you can hear me, I'll kinda be quiet and let you chime in there for anything you'd like to say on that five percent.
Okay, um, there's not much that I wanna add to it, this is part of the ten percent that was proposed in FY twenty, and only five percent was given, and I was asked to bring the additional five percent back in FY twenty-one, which is what is represented in that five percent step increase, so we're just asking for that additional five percent increase for the dietary staff. Um, I'm gonna answer any questions, but it's not any more complicated than that.
Okay, do I have a motion that we do that?
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Kot?
Yes.
Um, and I realized last year we gave the five percent raise, and I, you came, asked for ten, and I'm the one that asked you to come back this year for the other five, to do five, and then come back this year for the other five. Um, and this may sound a little harsh, and I don't mean for it to come out that way, but, you know, we gave, allowed that five percent raise last year, and then we were in a bind this year, and Dr. Flannery and you yourself said that you could not get your people to come in and work during this COVID without additional pay. And I guess my question to you is, as a board, how can we sit here and give that additional five percent, knowing that, you know, when we were in a bind, we were having to pay extra to get the people coming in and work? And I know that's probably gonna stir some harsh feelings to some of your workers and stuff, but I think it's a legitimate question.
Uh, my response to that is that this is being funded out of dietary, and at no point from the minute we shut down schools, did anyone refuse to come in to work for dietary. What was presented to the staff was that we were shutting down schools and going into an emergency feeding that we have never done before, and who wanted to work, meaning who felt safe, who didn't have children at home, that was a restriction for them, who didn't have elderly at home, who could work? It was never, you must work, and people said, we are not working, it was who wants to work? And then at that point, once I had my staff in line, I, with the permission of Dr. Flannery, and on the footsteps of a conversation with the state agent who says that that's what, and it, I have come to find out, is what, um, many districts have done, is supplement a hazardous pay for the dietary people who are still feeding these massive amounts of, um, meals. So that's when that was proposed, that additional, which, again, that additional bonus or hazard pay is funded out of dietary, so that's my response to that. I'm not sure how it came about that anyone was under that understanding that we had people refuse, that wasn't the case, and the additional money was because, again, I heard Mr. Merritt, Mitch Meredith bring it up at the beginning, that you have employees sitting at home collecting the same pay as, um, an employee that I have that was, you know, working nine-hour shifts, um, in an emergency state feeding. Um, just Monday, we fed almost eleven thousand meals. Um, if you'll keep in mind, we only have eight thousand students in our district, and we usually only feed about five thousand, so they really rise to the occasion, I can't speak more highly of what they've done. Um, just to date for the month of April, we're at over, um, oh, one hundred and eleven thousand meals, so, um, that's, I guess, my response to that. Again, this five percent is being funded out of dietary, it's ultimately up to you all, I can just bring you the numbers and show you that I can support the raise, and I hope that you choose to give it to them, because, um, they work very hard. Um, and it will put us in closer line with some of the other districts in the surrounding areas, so.
Let me just add, I mean, no one's questioning the work they do, everybody knows they're doing a fabulous job, and, but that was how it was presented to us, they could not get people to work without some kind of supplement. And let me also add, you know, you're doing a great job, we understand you're mu, you have the money there, I mean, you've turned that program around, and I understand you, and I'm, I'm glad you're wanting to put it back into the workers there and help them. But let me ask you, too, if it was to come back this fall, the same problem we have now, do you feel like you would have, if we gave that five percent, you'd still be well enough off to run your program? And if you had to pay, uh, hazard pay or whatever is getting called out of your budget, would you still be able to do that?
Well. We're feeding out of much greater capacity than we've ever fed before, while with that in mind, um, there are lost revenues associated with, I mean, all the cart sales, like the sales of products inside the school, um, and other things of that nature, but the actual meal production that's going out of kitchens right now, like I mentioned, is, you know, double, um, what we serve during a school days, and we're doing it with less staff. Um, so, yes, I believe that if our meals were to still be up that many, we would definitely have the revenue from our federal reimbursement to suffice that, and if our numbers were to drop, then we would obviously cut staff to get in line with that ratio and balance that out, to, you know, meet the amount of meals that are coming out of the kitchen. Um, so it's not like I have a full staff and I would have to keep them should we go into another shutdown and meals were to be less, if, if that answers the question, um, that you're asking.
Mary Beth?
Our salaries not comparable to others in the area?
When I brought it in to FY twenty, for the FY twenty budget, um, I brought salary representations, and I did not prepare that this evening, um, because, again, it had been presented, and, um, this was just on the foothills of, you know, FY twenty, just bringing back the other five percent. But it, it will get us closer to some other surrounding districts. Um, the one that I know off of my head, which I know is a hard one to, for us to compare to, but I just know it off of my head, is Johnson City Schools, and their starting rate is eleven dollars an hour, and I know Sullivan County is higher than ours, I believe, um, but I do not have that. Um, but I do not have that documentation in front of me to, to go over with you.
I make a motion, we accept this five percent raise. Step increase raise, if this would be considered.
I'm sorry.
We're still in discussion.
All right.
Um, what will this five percent raise bring your starting pay to?
I don't have it by the pay scale in front of me because I was looking at it on the, um, the budget aspect. Uh, Sharon just texted me, she says nine seventy, because she, she does a payroll. She says that'll bring our starting pay rate to nine seventy for our base kitchen, um, employee. At their starting rate.
And they get a step every year, is that what you want?
It's usually about one percent is what the dietary staff is.
Well, they also did, we just.
Yeah, this is all in addition to the one percent you've approved for the general fund, so their staff equals one percent.
Well, I, I think this is fair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I miss, I misspoke there. Um, nine seventy is the starting current rate. Uh, that would bring it to ten eighteen as the new rate.
And that would be comparable to Sullivan County?
I don't have their figure in front of me, but if I remember correctly, so I don't want to miss, tell you anything. Um, I believe that Sullivan County was above us when I did the analysis last year.
I, I made that motion that we accept this.
Let me ask.
Go ahead, Chad.
I just got a question, and this, Dr. or Ms. Cott, you can't answer it, so guess, but, um, what would that put us, you know, you said nine seventy, is that what you said the start pay would be? Is that correct?
That's what it is currently.
Okay. What is our, what is our, what's next level of paid position that we have, Brad?
Probably instructional assistants for the general fund. There could be some in the maintenance that's, that's down in that area. I'd, uh.
That's making less than ten dollars an hour?
Yeah, we do have, we do have several employees making under ten dollars an hour in the general fund. In fact, we did a study on that last year, and, oh, didn't, I won't say it was fifty or sixty, I don't remember.
That's when we went and asked the county commission to bring everybody up to the tent, because they did.
Right.
You all brought everybody up to ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, we're like two people.
Right. All two of them.
Talk was seriously.
I second my resolution.
Not very many at all.
This is to, this is to approve the FY twenty-one dietary budget with a five percent step.
As asked for. As requested.
Okay, I'm gonna bring something up too. Before we come bring them, we're still in discussion. How, Brad, how much, how much money did we put into dietary two or three years ago?
Uh, you're talking about seventy-five thousand. Uh, two years ago, it was.
Yeah, something like that.
Two, two and a half years ago.
Has, has that been replaced?
No, the board has not asked dietary to replace that.
Refund that yet?
Oh, we can fund it. I don't know if we can fund it.
Chad?
Answer, Chad.
They also, if we give the one percent like we just proposed, the man to go to send to the county commission, they'll get that one percent, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that one percent would be in addition to anything you do right now with dietary. So, so they would be, uh, if, if we got the one percent for general fund, dietary employees would get five percent plus one percent plus their staff increase, which is one percent.
Right.
So is the motion to agree with the five percent and the proposed budget, or just a proposed budget?
I'm sorry, I'll have to have you repeat that.
I said Mary Beth made a motion, maybe go, I don't know whose segment, but her motion was to approve their budget plus the five percent out of their budget, or for a five percent raise out of their budget?
That's what I understood her to say, and that is separate from the one percent that you just voted for general fund employees to get, so.
Right. But the money dietary fund is in the general fund, right?
The general fund does fund the one percent for dietary for first year. When you approve a one percent raise for every employee, the general fund will pay the dietary one percent plus fixed costs for the first year, then the next year, the dietary fund absorbs that.
So that would hit our, the food service account, it's jumping there with the six hundred thousand for the insurance.
Yeah, one percent for dietary would hit the general fund under the dietary, under the dietary section. This five percent is strictly gonna be off the dietary budget, so. But if you're asking, it'll be one percent raise plus five percent raise. So the dietary employees will get a six percent raise plus their step increase, which is one percent.
That one percent's already in the, what we voted on.
Yeah, the one percent's already in the budget.
For dietary.
Yeah, that is true.
I'm with.
Everybody agrees.
Yeah.
I'm with on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And to answer Chad's question, nine twenty-five is the starting pay for an instructional assistant in the general fund. I don't know if you heard that, Chad?
Yes, sir.
Nine twenty-five an hour is the starting pay for an instructional assistant in the general fund. With no experience, that's with no experience, no degree.
Okay.
Chad, you got something you want to say?
Can I say something else, sir?
Yeah.
Can I have this broke up into two motions? Would that be, is that too much to ask?
I don't have a motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Well, I do, I do, I do, I do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do.
And I haven't had a chance to comment.
We're still in discussion. Uh, we have a motion from Mary Beth and a second from, from, uh, Jason Day. Mr. McLean, you had something else you want to say?
I do, I do. Caitlin, what concerns me, uh, in the twenty budget, you're looking at reserves of eighteen thousand, and then you're looking at projected reserves for FY twenty-one of sixty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And with this, with this five percent increase, you're looking at wiping every bit of that away and taking your reserves to a projected five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Now, that's what, that's what concerns me. You build up a little bit of a fund balance, and in the full five percent, you just, you turn around and spend it. I think you need to work toward having a little bit more of a fund balance in there. So I think maybe a two or two and a half percent, and you're gonna preserve about half of your fund balance in there. Now, that's my opinion.
I just.
Go ahead, Chad.
Well, I, I just, I hate, I know this is a separate budget, I understand it completely, but I just hate that one part gets, you know, a one percent raise supposedly, and the other one gets six percent. It's pitting employees against each other. I'm not saying that they don't deserve it by any means, but it's just, what are we saying to the other ones that don't, that just got the one percent, like that nine twenty-four an hour? You just give them nine pennies. Or, you know, if you got them six, that'd be fifty-four cents. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't like, I wish we do across the board, that's my opinion. I'm done with that one.
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, I was under the impression she'd have a lot more in fund balance than just this.
That's correct, I do. The fund balance isn't represented here. Um, I'm not, I, I think our fund balance regarding dietary is different than how it's represented with one forty-one. As far as I can understand it, um, it's labeled fund balance here, but we have a healthier fund balance than that. Um.
They're around, they're over nine hundred thousand right now in fund balance.
Well, well, that, that's not, we will be, once we get March's reimbursement, we're currently sitting around seven hundred and thirty thousand.
So as of March thirty-first, your trustee report said you had nine hundred and forty-five.
That's correct, but we've had expenditure that have happened, and we haven't received a reimbursement yet.
So, Brad, as of March thirty-first.
So that's a, I guess that's a state law that we have to give. I don't understand why they get special raises, but then we give them a raise, though. Is that just a state?
It's not a state law, it's up to you as a board.
Well, why are we doing that?
Well, I mean, if she, you could have, you could have just, she's, she's coming and asking for five percent for people. You can give her two, them two, three.
Why, why are we giving them raises and she's giving them raises? Why don't we just let her give them the five percent, and we exclude them in the one percent?
Well, why don't you just, you could probably do four.
They're all employees of Washington County Schools.
I understand that, but all the other employees, like Chad said, don't get the five percent.
What we done last year was raised their pay up closer to.
And I don't disagree with that.
It's, it's the same thing as what we was trying to do with the principals. We tried to bring them up a thousand dollars, and we voted that down.
Well, last year, we voted for it, and then we turned around and give everybody a raise, and they got to add that too. Where others did.
So my biggest concern is food costs are gonna start going up. So what happens whenever the food cost goes up? You will have to start laying off people, is that what I understand?
Uh, no, I, I'm not sure what you mean. I mean, I have food costs represented with an increase for just, you know, the, the flux in the market as it typically does flux. It always is, you know, inflating. Um, but regarding laying people off and money and food costs going up, I, I don't.
Well, you said, you said a while ago, you said if, if you were having issues with the budget, that you would have to cut staff.
Um, no, that was in response to Mr. Gangers saying that if we were to go into another type of shutdown come, um, fall, when we start into school, if I could sustain the increase, um, if we were to go into some type of emergency shutdown again. And my response is, is that I'm sure that there would be staff that would not be able to work as there are currently. And then in addition to that, if I need to send more people, you know, home and say, you know, I, I don't have, we're not feeding enough kids for you to come during this emergency feeding, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, especially since all employees are receiving a check. It's not like they're going to the house and not getting pay, which, you know, again, comes into the whole issue with, um, hazard pay that we faced earlier, um, a few months ago. So I would always adjust my staff, as any company does, to meet the company's needs and the production of food going out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but then, okay. Why, why is, where it says food supplies, why is there a decrease of seven thousand dollars?
Well, uh, this is based off of, you know, FY nineteen twenty up until March, and then, um, we used a lot of FY eighteen, nineteen for March, April, May, and June because, you know, this isn't a typical time right now, it's a budget. So it's, food costs have just went down for us. Um, we're utilizing inventory better. Um, we also had an increase, if you see, to the commodity, the USDA commodities went up, um, to two hundred and sixteen thousand from a hundred and eighty-five thousand, that's food. So when that's increasing, obviously, that's food that I'm getting from the USDA government, that's fresh produce, that's turkey, things of that nature, it's food. Um, it comes to me in the form of food, not in the form of dollars, though. Um, and so that also outweighs that little seven thousand dollar difference there.
Well, I do see, I do think that food costs is gonna go up. I really, I really see that could go up. Because there's a lot of crop getting.
The, the predicted expenditure regarding food costs is still almost a hundred thousand dollars over where we predict to actually land at the end of fiscal year twenty. Does that make sense? So there's an increase built in there. Again, this budget from FY twenty is, you know, what we predicted would have happened in FY twenty, but we're actually much lower in food costs than we predicted for budget FY twenty. So this is, you know, my FY twenty-one is based off of what has transpired over nineteen twenty with its new predictions of how growth and decreases will happen, if that makes sense.
I understand what you're saying, but I understand now that they, they, they could be a major, a major increase in food cost as far as, when you've got slaughterhouses shutting down, and you've got all this other shutting down, and there's, your, your grocery store coolers and stuff is empty, I, I think it's gonna really make a big jump, so. But that's just my thinking, so. I have a motion and a second on doing the five percent.
And approve their budget.
And approve their budget?
Can we not?
Separate those?
All right, we'll separate it.
Well, see, I'll take back my second.
Okay?
You can restate your motion.
Restate your.
You want to go on first, their budget?
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Cott, you're sitting here telling us that you feel like you can do this five percent budget, and if next year, school, beginning of school year, things go bad again, like they are now, that you're comfortable with that, and you feel like you can absorb any kind of loss, uh, that would occur? Because ultimately, exactly what Jason's saying, you know, if you, you go under, it falls on us, per se.
Yeah, I hear, I, I absolutely feel very comfortable with this sustaining a five percent step raise. Um, I wouldn't, never brought a budget to you that I didn't feel, um, comfortable with, um, and asked for something that I didn't think my program could sustain comfortably. So yes, I absolutely do. With that said, everything right now, um, is, is really good because we are feeding so many meals that our reimbursements are going to be very healthy reimbursements. But, and I know that this is kind of out of the picture, but all of this can be recouped through the FEMA acts that, as far as I was, um, it was described to be, because this is hazard-coded feeding. Um, it's not really school nutrition feeding at this moment, it's emergency feeding sites. So, um, this was, this is like as if, you know, if there was a natural, you know, a tornado or something, we would still feed kids in our emergency feeding program, and then all that money and all those expenditures, salaries, food costs, all of that should be able to be recouped. I get that it's outside of the picture in years down the road, but ideally, that would be recouped. And yes, even with that said, and if that were to never happen, I feel very comfortable that we can sustain this five percent raise and, um, and continue to grow our program.
Do you, do you think that you will get reimbursed weekly?
Um, I can tell you that I placed the, um, March reimbursements, um, about, hmm, I placed them on April twenty-seventh, and they've been processed. So they should be on their way to the trustee's office and within a couple of weeks, I, I would dare say. Um, I, there are times, especially around the holidays or the start of the year, that it does take Nashville a little bit, uh, longer to get us our reimbursements. Um, I think that they're working really hard to get us our money on time because they know that we need it. Um, it has been processed by the state at this point, so it should be hitting the banks fairly quickly, if, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I want to say one more thing, and then I'm gonna ask for a vote, but we sat here and we. Okay, but I'm, we've sat here and we've turned principals down, we've turned coaches down, and I'm just, I'm asking for the vote, uh, clarification on your motion.
First one is to approve the budget for food services.
This would be the, the step increase budget is the first one, Mary Beth, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the budget, FY twenty.
Well, there's two of them.
Well, I thought somebody wanted it separated.
Chad wanted it separated.
Now, the step increase is mandatory, just like Brad spoke about earlier. Um, so if you, if you, if you're referring to like just the. Um, so if you, if you, if you're referring to like just the basic FY twenty dietary, that would be the step increase one. I, I wrote it in such a way so that you would know, um, but that's the basic one. Um, if there's something you don't like in that, we could obviously go back and see what we could do. But with our program, it's pretty black and white. I mean, it's money in and money out.
It's the same step increases that we've done for our budget.
Yeah, it's mandatory.
Mandatory.
Just leave it together.
Pay skill.
No, because we're raising it, we're gonna give them a five more percent on top of their step increase. Plus the one percent that they're gonna get if we get the budget.
Well, then we're going to vote on the blue one.
Yeah, Dr. Budget didn't decide whether you were giving the five percent or not.
So, so the first one, then you're gonna just say motion for the step increase, then you all are gonna take up the five percent after that? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, okay.
I'm second, adopting the blue budget.
So adopting the step increase, dietary budget step increase, FY twenty-one. That's what we're doing right now, then we're gonna take up the five.
Roll call vote please.
Ms. Cannon? Yes. Mr. Day? Ms. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
This is with, just the step increase and the budget increases online, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flainer? Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Ah. Now, I need a motion on the five percent.
I make a motion, we add the five percent step increase. Plus step increase, I'm sorry. Well, we need five percent.
You done voted on a step increase.
I'm sorry.
It's five percent.
Right.
As requested.
As requested, yes.
As requested.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cannon? No. Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Ms. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Ms. Irvin?
No. Motion carries, motion passes. Okay. I need a motion that we paid for the senior signs that's up here on the front.
We did that at the very first?
We just added it to the agenda, sorry.
I make a motion that we paid for the senior signs.
And I said it.
All right, I have a motion and a second that we paid for the.
How much? I wanna know how much.
I looked at it, three hours.
How much?
Can I ask a question? Can the people that, that we didn't, the, the honor people, the, the ten percent, is there any way to be able to attach something to the bottom that says top ten percent for those kids because they've got nothing?
I like that idea.
Bump that money up a little bit, a little bit, Tom, Paul, do it, but it'll, it'll take more money.
I, I know, but we didn't, we didn't spend the money on their banquet, so surely to goodness, we've got that money to spend.
Well, we didn't, we didn't save a dollar amount anyway, though.
A sticker would work.
They tell me about twenty-seven hundred dollars.
A sticker would work, yeah, a sticker would be.
I don't know where you put sticker, but.
They make riders that'll, he'll just make another piece and he'll stick them and talk it out.
And I just, I just think that, that they need some type of recognition because they, they've not gotten anything outside of what we normally do for them.
We're gonna go something to the top ten, something.
Yeah.
Cause how, how many of them are there? Hundred?
About seven hundred. Oh, oh, top ten, sixty-six.
Top ten. Yeah, so sixty-six, you just need sixty-six of them.
We can make it to five hundred dollars, we'll make it.
Okay. Can I, can I amend, do I need to amend that?
We didn't put a dollar amount on it.
I know, but I need to, I might need to amend it to put the top ten.
I have a motion and a second to fund it.
Fund it.
And you're, you're asking to put something on the top ten?
Just for the top ten, just the sixty-six of them.
We can fit these out here, so people online can fit them.
Oh, they're neat, yeah.
Motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Ms. Cannon? Yes. Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Ms. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes, please.
Mr. Meredith?
Definitely.
Ms. Irvin?
Ah.
Did you catch all that, Ashley? Okay, it'll be on you, make that happen.
Okay, now, Dr. Flannery is gonna speak to us about graduation.
Hey, I'm turning over to the secondary supervisor who is heading up the effort and will bring a final plan to you at May seventh, but she's been working diligently along with the principal and team in both high schools. And Ashley, what have you got going so far?
Okay, on Thursday, I met with graduation teams from both high schools and we looked at doing a traditional graduation in July at each school because when TSU canceled their graduation, we were no longer allowed to use that venue. The director from the health department said that he advised against a traditional graduation. We normally have, what, thirty-five hundred guests? And we will, they'll be distancing in July. So we are now looking at, it's kind of a virtual graduation, but not really. Each senior will be invited to the high school, the gym will be set up just like a traditional graduation. Their families will be invited and it will be a private ceremony. Bob St. John is going to record each of those and he assured me that he can put all those clips together where it looks like a graduation. We would give him a DVD so that they could watch their friends graduate. The students would be in full regalia, their families would be there, they would have photo opportunities. Their names would still be announced, they would walk across the stage and it would be personal and it would be meaningful. And so as long as Bob can video for both high schools and clip it all together, it's a go. And it should not cost us any more money than we would have paid ETSU by, it's probably gonna be cheaper, but we would need to purchase the DVDs and give those to the graduates. So cover Bob's costs.
I like that idea.
Yes, I was gonna mention that. Our seniors would like to do senior celebrations at both high schools. Ron Kill at Crockett approached Peggy about a parking lot celebration and that has now turned into a senior parade where we would partner with the town of Jonesboro and the sheriff's department and seniors would decorate their cars and dress up and drive through town and it would end at David Crockett where they would have, um, from what Peggy has told me, Ron Kill will get with the radio station, the radio station will play a song of their choice. All the seniors will listen to that song in their cars, they would knock it out and turn the radio up. And then the teachers would be lined up. Um, Tim Campbell wants something very similar at Daniel Boone, they're looking at doing like balloon marches and the families drive through them. So it's a separate celebration before graduation.
Just as long as it's not on the same night where the board can attend both places. Now, they didn't realize that. What?
For the parade?
Yes.
Yes, I will talk to them. The seniors are the ones that are leading that effort and the administration's working with them. So we will make sure that people from Crockett are not doing them on the same day.
Okay. Thank you.
So you don't need any, uh, us to vote for any money for this? You're using the money that was already allocated when we were going, okay.
Yes, because we would have had to pay for access security, the metal detectors at ETSU and so we do not have to pay for that now.
That's a great job.
Okay, everybody, uh, we've got a board meeting on May the seventh. Start time, uh, will be.
Well, what do they, he didn't mention maybe having a committee meeting, so I guess we need to know that first.
Well, I think our board meeting needs to start at six thirty.
May seventh?
May seventh.
So what do you wanna do on?
I'd like to do the finance meeting, meeting, uh, either Tuesday or Wednesday, what works for you?
Well, we're supposed to be all, we should be all there.
And I'll bring federal projects and finance.
But now.
We're gonna meet at state?
Mitch, if we do a finance meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday at four thirty, what works for you? Four thirty?
Okay.
Or four? Four, four thirty?
I said, can we not go to five, please?
Why not have it at five, yeah.
For our meeting, I mean.
It's gonna be down here, nobody's.
The board meeting.
Gonna be coming. Nobody can come.
I'll go five thirty.
So what y'all decide on finance, I'm sorry.
Tuesday at four. If that's on finance, make that work.
Wednesday at four?
Anybody else have anything else? Thank you all, rough meeting, but we got a lot accomplished, so we'll see how things go. Meeting adjourned.
What time was the finance deal?
Hey, I need you to help me with something.